The October 20th, 2025 Auburn City Council Workshop will be called to order. The first item of business tonight is the public safety facility design approval. And I, Mr. Manager, you're gonna kick this off?
I'll kick it off. Thanks, Mayor. So Mayor and Council, I'm gonna have Dan and Megan McDevitt. Devitt, you've met Megan before. She's been before you with other projects. Chief Moe and Chief Chase, if you want, just wanna come up here. Megan's with Wooded and Curran, so she's at the, part of our lead engineering team that's been working on this project and several other projects we have going on. We're gonna talk a little bit about some of those other projects as we move. Dan, if you wanna just bring up the full, yeah, that one. And we can probably zoom in a little bit. So, so just to orientate yourself, Council, where we're at currently. This is the layout of the new facility. This is the public safety facility that will be on Minutet Avenue. If you were really up close, you would see this dotted line in the middle of that building somewhere. That's where the existing fire station is located.
This is Jesus.
Can you show it, Dan?
Yeah.
Oh, I can't see your mouse. We gotta work on that. So, so you don't really see, but one thing I wanted to highlight for you, if you look at the far left of the design layout, those are the apparatus bays for the fire. So fire will be on that side of the building. On the right side of the building, as you're looking at the screen, that will be the police side of the building. And that little bump out that you see on the bottom, that is the, that's the Sally Port for, for police to be able to come in with their cruiser and a security area. They bring a prisoner in, they could take, or somebody who's been arrested, rather detained, they can bring them out in a secured space and then bring them through. Immediately inside the building off that Sally Port will be the detention area. So you can kinda see the layout of those two spaces. The front is some parking that we have for, that'll be for visitors coming to the facility. We have a lot of transactions that take place at the police department. That'll be the public parking area. And then the parking in the back will be for, for staff. And it's not only just staff that's on duty. We also have staff that are at the facility because of training. Fire, that could be fire. It also could be some regional agencies that are there using, using some of the training space. And so, and then that's also part of the rolling stock, meaning the vehicles that police might have, they're gonna be in under that parking area. That spot you see to the right where it's blue, that is the, that's the area. And one thing that we won't have for you is what that build, that building will look like. In the original designs, that building included the rolling assets for police. Police has several different types of vehicles that we would've stored them in there, cuz they're currently being stored either here in the garage, or if you go out of the parking garage and take a left when you come out of this parking garage, there's an overhead door. We have, we have police vehicles that are in that, that bay area. That's what would be going in there. But also what was in the original design for this was firing range, police firing range. So what administration's presenting for you is to eliminate that firing range now that we know where the numbers are coming in, not to proceed with that, that part of the project. So that building will probably, will be reconfigured. And so we'll work with the design team on what that will look like. And then if you look at the very bottom of this screen, this is where the burn building will be. Chief Chase was able to acquire a grant to assist with that. We currently have a burn building that's old and that was gonna need a great deal of repairs to that if we were gonna be able to keep it. This will be the new burn building. This was not part of the original project when we were designing this, but with that grant funding, we've included this in. So total project is...
Sorry, which are those blocks?
So you see the narrow, the rectangle block in the center?
I don't have a cursor. Is there a chance that somebody could point to the stuff?
Yeah. See, it doesn't work.
Doesn't work. That's the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dan, if you hit that, if you hit that top one, that's not gonna show up there?
No.
I can show you over here.
I don't, it won't let me draw either.
You want me to band it wide? Could you do that?
And, and like point where the line was separating the two and just show us the whole layout? Where's Minutet Ave? I can't, I can't see anything.
Yeah. So Minutet Avenue is on the top, right where his hand is? Yep. And Bob, you can probably see where the old building was. Can you show that one?
Yeah.
Yep. So that'll be demoed as part of this project. We acquired, Chief, can you show the line where the property boundary used to be?
Yes, right there.
So, so if you remember, you, the council approved the purchase of the lot that was beside the fire station? So that's that lot. Everything that you see there is gonna be used as part of that purchase of that, of that space. And so now, Chief, if you scroll down, Dan, and we see the bottom of the screen, so that center one, go, that'll be the burn building. There'll be, you see the other small square? That's the concrete pad for apparatus. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, we, we do car fires, and so the concrete pad gives us a place that's not on asphalt. We currently have a concrete pad for training there, but it's about getting it off of asphalt and on the car fire or something like that.
And then there's another building, Bob, if you can show that. And Bob, if you can at that mic, just talk about what that building there is.
Sure. So when we're doing live fire burns, they're done in evolutions. We have a lot of people around. We need a lot of backup, and we take teams individually and rotate them through scenarios. And any of the training we do down, down there is typically done through scenarios. This building is like 300 feet from the station. It's not right in the back parking lot like our current building is. So what happens is we're always taking crews into the station and we're talking about the, the safety measures of the evolution they're getting ready to do, what the objectives are, prepping them for it. After they're done their evolution, we bring them into a space to debrief it, to critique it, to give feedback, those types of things. And so as they build, as the state funds and builds out these training facilities, they look to have what we call, I'm calling, it's not an official term, what I call the dirty classroom, meaning somebody that still has their bunker gear on, for example, and has gone through an evolution has a space to go in, maybe get some feedback, maybe have a drink of water, or use a restroom before they go to their next evolution. And so that's the nature of having a, a dirty classroom. We would not want those individuals going into our training room, for example. And in our current situation, what we do is they go into the apparatus bay, but that's, you know, currently 75 feet from the back of the building, not 300 feet from the back of the building. So that's the nature of intended use.
So what's great about that add-on of this project is that it's coming in just over $900,000 for this. $500,000 is being covered under the main fire grant for this project. I think Megan will kinda just talk about the site and some of the challenges that I think we've kinda worked through with this site. And then also, Megan, where we are currently in the process.
Point for you since...
Okay.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you all very much for having me here tonight and talk about it. As the city manager mentioned, and he did a very good job of giving the overview of all the different components, but as you can see, we are pretty much maxing out the site to fit all of the needed programming for this proposed public safety facility. I'll start with the big building, which is the actual public safety facility. On the left side, as you mentioned, that will be a single-story apparatus bay, so that is just where all of the tower truck, which we are relocating from Station 5 over to here, which was one of the main goals of this project, is plus the engine, the ambulances, everything will be in there. Then in the center is a two-story building with fire on the left side and police on the right side, and then the small Sally Port, which will be a single-story kinda pull-through bay, so that can have secure transfer of detainees. There will also be, the way the design has been set up is the shared community space. The spaces shared are center. So they're between the, like, EOC training rooms, all that are between the two departments, so that they can be shared, which helps with space efficiency and things like that. The way we laid this out was we tried to put the apparatus bay, because making sure that ties in, that driveway ties into Minutet Ave was kinda the key component. So that really dictated how the building was oriented on the site. And then from there, we tried to maximize the efficiency of the parking in the back, making sure we have good turning movement. These are large vehicles, you know, that the fire trucks drive and even the police officers, so be able, for them to get in and out of there safely, so that they could respond.
Is this the driveway of Minutet Ave? Is it the, 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 the,[698.75]
Review the and approve the initial conceptual design of the project. And what we're looking to do is create a 21st century training facility for our folks. And with that, if you look at the number of ambush-style attacks that are occurring on police officers across the country, there were 61 in 2024 that resulted in 79 officers being shot, 18 of them being killed in this type of ambush setting. Those numbers are tracking the same for 2025 as well. In order to be able to train to defeat some of these attacks is having the ability to do low-light training with live fire and be able to tactically practice maneuvers with personnel. And having an indoor range allows us to do that. And with also the firearms training, firearms is a perishable skill that you need to train constantly on. Right now, we're doing the bare minimum as required by the Maine Criminal Justice Academy, where we do our qualifications once a year. We've added a second half-day at the Anders Coggin Fishing Game Club to do some additional trainings. The logistics of getting the fishing game club to give up their outdoor range for an entire week of training, which is usually takes for us to complete, is getting more and more difficult. They have external pressures that they're dealing with, and setting aside an entire week at a time is becoming problematic for both the, for the fishing game club as well. And, you know, by having this indoor range onsite, it allows us to save on some overtime because we can do micro in-service training while officers are on duty during downtimes. We can split them off for an hour to do some small, low-level tackle things. And also, this provides us an opportunity to have a regional center where there's a concern that, you know, the annual maintenance costs aren't sustainable. The annual maintenance costs for the live-fire range are estimated to be about $22,000 to $25,000 a year. Right now, I have four commitments from, I have commitments from four agencies in the area that are willing to help defray those maintenance costs if they're allowed to use the facility. So I think we could build upon that and have that range serve as a regional training opportunity, which would allow us to apply for state and federal grants as a regional training center to be able to maintain and enhance that training space.
Thanks, Chief. So as I mentioned, I think that that had been part of the discussions from the previous committee that made the presentation that went to referendum. But as the costs have been coming in, the recommendation that I'm making to the council is that not be included. I think it's something that we should explore some future options, that we should explore a regional approach. I think there's some opportunities to even explore a public-private partnership on an initiative like this. And so, but we do see that value for the practical training area. This is the area where all the other equipment that the officers are wearing, they need to be able to know how to use those effectively rather than just the training that they got certified at once at the academy. This allows them to work on that. And it also provides a space, as the chief mentioned, for that micro-training opportunity. So it's not a full training day. It could be something that through, you know, observation of a supervisor, that one of the officers need some additional training on an element, they can go right into that space and be able to do that. So, so good value in that, and I think we'll have a good return. And then we will continue seeking what the original option might look like. Dan, if you can pull up the funding one, I think that's the slide that we have left, right? I'll do, we'll do this one last. Let's do funding first. So just so you know where we are currently today. So the project is coming in at $48,236,424. These are, these are my numbers, just so that we're clear. I'm sorry, the total project cost came from the engineering team and the work that Allied Cook has done. That's their number. What we see in this is that right now, we're carrying about a 5% contingency amount in that 48 million. And so, we would, we see us getting that contingency down to about 2.5%. So if you get that to 2.5%, we're now reducing the 1.8. We did receive 2.5 billion in congressional delegated spending funds for this public safety project. So now we can take 2.5 million off that that we have available. As I mentioned, the chief was able to successfully acquire the grant for $500,000 for the, for the burn building. And then, as I mentioned, removal of the firing range, it's about 1.5 million to remove the firing range from there. What I did add in, and this is something that was not part of the original, but what I added in is the relocation cost for 911. If you go back and take a look at how we presented this, we said, actually, in the bond, the language within the bond says, "Any other costs impacted by this project." Well, 911 is a cost that's going to be impacted by this project. So I added 1.1 million in here. That number's going to be tight. I think we're hoping that's where it gets in at. There's still some, some work that has to be done. We're not at full design on that, but I, we think this is about where we're going to come in on that. And then, value engineering savings, again, this is taking a number based on, okay, I think our team talked with the committee at the last meeting regarding, if you just take HVAC and the electrical alone, and you say we could get at least a 10% savings on those two elements, we're hoping we're going to see a bigger number than the $700,000 through value engineering. But that's just a, that's a really conservative saving amount that I'm hoping for us to see. So that means the total municipal bond would be at $42,250,000. The voters approved up to $45 million. We've currently withdrawn for a bond in FY '24 was $5,850,000. So what we have pending, if that's the number we hit, the 42 million, then we still need to draw down $36,400,000. When we talk about this project having a lot of moving parts, Dan, go to the next, next slide. What you're going to see is, and Dan, if you can zoom in on this a bit, too. This is our timeline of this, these projects. So we have Engine 2, which has broke ground just over a week ago, I think. And so, so that construction is underway. Just as a reminder for those at home, Engine 2 will be built while Engine, the current Engine 2 is still onsite on South Main Street. When the building is done, the old Engine 2 will be leveled, and then the rest of the work will be done on that site. So that project is underway. We're a little delayed, but we're, we're going to get back on track on that. And so, we're hoping that by October of 2026, that, that project will be complete. Then we have the Public Safety Building that's going through this process currently. As was mentioned, we're, we're at 50% of designs. I'm trying to see if it's on there. I can't see it from here.
Right here, the middle yellow.
Yeah.
Middle yellow. All right. Yeah, so if you see where that white column starts, that's about where we're at. We're in that area, so we're on track where we need to be here. And then, if you scroll down, we have 911 Dispatch, and then we have 67 Kitty Hawk. So when we talk about a lot of moving pieces, what has to happen before we can level the fire station at 550 Minutet Avenue, which is the current central station, 911 has to be relocated. And the fire department has to be relocated. And rescue has to be relocated to Engine 2. So fire personnel will go to 67 Kitty Hawk, 911 Dispatch, if approved tonight. This is an order that you had that we workshopped at the last meeting, that 911 will come here to the third floor of Auburn Hall. We then need to move some personnel that are here over to 95 Main Street. And so, so there's a lot of things happening to make this work and meet the timeline. That's what happens when we build on sites we already own, and we have buildings that are coming down. And if you recall, we talked about this not being a two-phase project and doing a one-phase. So here's all the moving parts with this project, which are multiple. So JP came in. JP, if you want to come up to the table in case you've got any questions. JP's with Allied Cook. They're doing a great job for us on other projects. They're also doing Kitty Hawk, 911, Engine 2, and Public Safety. So we've got them very busy, and, but they're here, they can answer questions as well. That's what we have for you tonight, counsel. I think timing-wise, what we're looking for, so the ask tonight is, you know, you passed an order back in March, I think it was, I have it in your packet, March 3, 2025, that the final design and cost of the Public Safety Facility to be approved by the council. Where we're at now is that this is really, the final design as far as, the building isn't going to go change the footprint, what we're proposing isn't going to change. You're seeing the layout. The final, final design that the engineering team and everyone will be doing is more, you know, the electrical designs, the plumbing designs, you know, there'll be some small shifting and changes within the building itself. But this is what we're looking to build. And I included in your packet the recommendation from the ad hoc committee. They had a few recommendations that's in there for your consideration as well. We do have former counselor Andy Titus, who's on that committee that's here, and I'm sure could, could answer any questions that you have regarding their recommendation. But what we'll be seeking, counsel, is we're on track, the numbers are coming in under $45 million. If we're on track, can we proceed and keep moving this project? Because we'll probably have full designs completed by the first of the year. Value engineering will take us into March, I'm assuming. And so, before we get there, we need to know from you, are we on track? Are we hitting what the expectations are? We feel we are based on the referendum, but the final decision comes from you.
Questions from the council? Counsel Cal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of the, just want to make sure I'm understanding, senior manager, you're recommending option A related to the Police Tactical Center or related, I'm looking at, sorry, page five of our packet, which is, I think, what came from the ad hoc committee. Excuse me, there's Police Tactical Center, there's two options there. And if I'm understanding what you're, what you're recommending at this point, given costs, is the rolling assets building only. I was glad to hear, Chief Moen, that you have been working with folks to potentially create some kind of regional facility at some point in the future, because that was a concern I had, is, well, where do you go now? And it sounds like there may be limitations in terms of some of the firing range training. So glad to hear that that's, that's something you might be considering in the future. So that makes, but am I understanding that correct, that that's what we're talking, that that's your recommendation?
That's what we're recommending.
Just to clarify that, and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong here, it's the rolling asset and a training area, right? In that building, there's going to be room to do some types of training things that are physical, that you wouldn't be doing in a conference room in the main building.
That's correct, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr., this is sort of on purpose, but maybe a little bit not. When you had talked about a prisoner, detainees, and, I mean, today, do you bring them in downstairs, process them, and then take them, if they need to be held, to Anders Coggin?
It's kind of a three-part answer to that, ma'am. If we're bringing somebody in to be interviewed or interrogated that's under arrest, yes, we do bring them in downstairs. We have to bring them through the public area, which has always been a security concern for us for the last 15 years. If we are taking somebody directly to jail, we process them at the jail. However, if we've arrested somebody for OUI, we have to take them to either Lewiston or the jail for the intoxicilizer piece. So the prisoner processing piece for the last 15 years has been somewhat haphazard. We've made it work, but again, it's haphazard.
So in other words, when this is done, will you be holding prisoners more in, in this new facility than you can here? Or is it the same basic process when you get them processed, then they go to the county jail?
It'll be somewhat the same process. However, we will be able to bring detainees back to the Public Safety Building, process them for the OUI before taking them to the county, bring them in safely to be interviewed or whatnot. With the overpopulation of the county jail, back when we were at 100 Avenue, sometimes we'd bring peoples into the detention area and call a bailout commissioner and have them booked from the police station instead of taking them to the county jail. With this new facility, that could be an option for us. We're not sure yet what that looks like, given the future of county jail operations.
May I continue, please?
Yeah, I was going to follow up on that point. Are you going to move on to another? Yeah, so just so I'm clear, you're not going to be holding prisoners there from the sense that they're detained beyond your initial work of booking them and giving them toxolizer tests or whatnot. If they actually have to be held for any period of time, they would go to the jail?
That's correct. We're only allowed to hold prisoners up to, for a six-hour period in any type of detention facility that we have. So our, our facility is pretty much a processing area. We don't hold them more than six hours. They have to go to the county jail if they've been held more than six hours.
Thank you. Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you guys talk about the fire drills on the burn building out back, and then the residue that could seep into the ground and stuff, you guys, from what I understand, are saying that the drainage should be able to catch it and stop it from getting into probably the streams or the wetlands. Is that true?
Yeah, the design, the design incorporates water catchment systems, both for storm water and for water that we may be spraying in the burn area. The typical fire suppression operations don't have hazardous runoff. It's, we burn wood and hay, and it's stuff that if you had a normal campfire and it got rained on, is similar in nature. We don't use firefighting foam that contains PFAS, as you might have heard, and some of those other things. That's a specific type of foam for a specific type of hydrocarbon fires, right? And what we're doing back in this space is, in the burn structure, is primarily hay and pallets, wood pallets. And so, and any of that runoff by design will be caught in the catchment system, which I will say is an improvement over current status, because we don't have water catchment in and around our existing burn building.
So with this wetland, is there any chance that you're going to have to try to apply to, I guess, the DEP or whoever manages wetlands to possibly move it?
Yes, we are actively going through the permitting process for the impacts to the wetlands and the stream. We've already met with Army Corps, and we actually had a site visit, chief and I, with Maine Inland Fish and Wildlife. So they've been down there to look at it, to make sure that we are minimizing the impact to the greatest extent. And we also have reached out and started the conversation with DEP, too. So we are going through that process for all those regulatory agencies to make sure we're doing the best design we can to mitigate as many adverse impacts on those wetlands, streams, and other adjacent resources.
May I also go on, please? When you had, when you had said that on the third floor, 911 will be relocated there, that's correct, right?
Yes, right.
What's going to happen in the downstairs where the police department is now? Are they still going to stay down there? Or what is that space going to be used for?
Well, during the construction, PD will remain here to the completion of the construction. And then, once they move into that building, then they'll leave this, you know, this building as well as 95 Main Street. And then, we'll then talk about, we currently have, if you recall, we've taken over conference rooms and other spaces. We'll talk about now, how do we reconfigure this facility based on those changes?
So in other words, all these employees that we farm out, like at Skeleton Taint or in Abbott, potentially could come back and be relocated downstairs so that we don't have to pay the fees and charges for next door?
Yeah, we don't have anyone over there currently. When we moved the community, business and community development over to 121 Mill Street, we left that building. And so, but we retained the lease because we knew this was potentially coming. And so, so there will be no other staff that we're bringing back in here into this building when this movement is done. They'll stay at 121 Mill Street.
And they'll, they'll go, as I understand it, when 911 comes to this building, some detectives and supervisors that are here now are going to move into 95 Main Street to accommodate 911. And when this new facility is done, they will all vacate 95 Main Street, move into the new Public Safety Facility, and will terminate that lease.
Correct.
So in other words, within a few years, when everything is completed, then we're not going to be, keep having to pay the additional fees for being outside?
Correct. And, and what's included in the 911 cost that you see there is the lease for 95 Main Street. So we'll be paying 50% of that lease. Lewiston will be paying the other 50% of that lease for 95 Main Street, for our personnel to have to relocate out of this building.
And they're also going to cover half the cost of moving 911 upstairs?
That's correct.
And then, after everything is, all the dust is settled, and they've moved in where they all have to be, and we get them out, the people out of 95 Main Street, then there'll be no additional cost to either cities?
For?
For having to pay for the building lease next door?
Yeah, that'll be done.
That'll go away.
Yeah.
It won't be an impact for our Auburn taxpayers or anything?
Right.
Lewiston can deal with their own taxpayers.
Yeah, there'll be no, there'll be no other impacts after that's completed. Correct.
Thank you.
Counsel Whiting.
Thank you. Just a question on contingency. I get nervous with reducing contingency. So I guess the question is, what are the greatest risk areas for use of the contingency? And then, when do you get comfortable dropping it?
So typically, we carry 5% to 10%, like 10% in the beginning, 5% to 50% design. And then, we're at our essentially 99% design here by the beginning of the year. We would drop that, sorry, to 2.5%. 2.5%. The city holds 2.5%. Contractor holds 2.5%. So there's a big, because we're so far along in the design, there's nothing outstanding that we're not sure of anymore. The mechanical systems have been picked, the site has been determined, all the foundation designs are completed. There, there should be no large unknowns. Well, there won't be any large unknowns anymore. And so, like PAL, I think we reduced to 2%. Engine 2, we're at 2.5%. It's, it's a very comfortable number based on where we are design-wise.
Counsel Whiting.
My only concern was the site, just doing all that demolition, and then what are the unknowns underneath? I mean...
We've done, we've had SW coal out there drilling about three times? Three or four times, doing explorations, making sure our foundation design is safe and that we're good to go, and those sorts of things. So we're pretty comfortable.
Counsel Platt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was a great question, Counsel Whiting. I was going to ask the same thing about the contingency. I guess, remaining, I just have a comment and a question. My comment is that at some point in the process, I know it's not required of this process, but for our budgetary considerations, I'd love to know how this project affects future operating budgets. We just learned that a lease may be taken off the table. Does this increase, you know, both chiefs' operating budgets? If we, I mean, it sounds like we're not going to have the indoor shooting range, but if we did, we pay for more ammunition. So that's one little thing of hundreds of things. But I'd be curious, at some point in this process, to understand, have we just ballooned our public safety operational budget by 0%, 5%, 10%, negative 3%? I'd be curious, even anecdotally, from each chief, at some point in the future, to understand how we're going to be affecting operational budgets, understanding, we don't need to talk about it today.
Yeah, we typically will, will gear up like we did for the PAL Center when we did the last budget. We'll gear up for this when that's coming in, so that we have a good understanding of what those impacts. You're absolutely correct, there will be operational impacts as a result of this new facility. Yeah.
Great. And then, so I guess my question is, with the five, roughly five and a half million that we bonded, 5.8, is that right?
Correct.
How are we putting that money to use now? Are we locking in quotes on materials ahead of time? Seems like a lot of money just for design. So how are we putting that money to use so we're not just paying interest on dead weight?
Yep, so we haven't spent it all. That's for all the geotechnical work that we've done. It's for all the design work we've done, both the civil site, the architectural design We will use some of that to pre-purchase items, especially electrical items that have long lead times, that we can lock in pricing now. It pays for Allied Cook to do work out at 97, I mean, 67 Kitty Hawk Street. It pays for that work. It's going to pay for the work, hopefully, upstairs in the 911 center. So that money will be used to pay for those renovate, that renovation and that rehab upstairs.
We are working through numbers as well. If you recall, as we've been approving projects through TIFF funding, Kelsey has been working through identifying, what does that look like? Where are we at? How does that help offset our current debt service? What that will look like moving forward? You've approved nine projects to date. Of those nine projects, we know the full value of what we'll collect based on the way the TIFF was designed. We're hitting just over $400,000 currently. That'll go towards debt service. That only goes up from there. As new projects come in, we'll continue to capitalize that 15%, in those projects. And so, we'll continue to see those numbers that we will apply towards the debt offset.
Other questions or comments from the council? Counsel Cal.
In terms of the dirty building, I think, again, I'm looking at what the ad hoc committee, that document there, but they reference the ability of having that be a space that can be used more regionally. If you could speak, Chief Chase, in terms of, would, is there a potential offset in terms of costs? Would we be renting? Is that something you do at this point? Could do?
Yeah, absolutely. As part of the grant process, we were actually required, our, our current existing building has been identified by the state as one of six or seven regional training facilities. There is no state fire academy that I can send somebody to in residential capacity for six weeks or for three months to come out ready to work. And so, the state has identified the fact that, that where that doesn't exist, they need to provide regional facilities, and that's what has made the grant funding opportunity available. So as part of that grant application, we got letters of commitment and MOUs from 26 area agencies. That MOU includes an expectation that there will be a fee for service to offset ongoing continued maintenance costs. We have a draft fee-for-service policy at this point, so that is established. So it absolutely, you know, we will work to, we have, we've had a longstanding account set up already by which we recover some reimbursement fees already in our existing building that goes toward future maintenance. So the infrastructure is in place. Where the state has identified us as a regional training facility, we're already over that hurdle. We have, we had, I've got my numbers here, but something on the order of 15 departments that used our training building last year to varying capacities. So we're establishing the regional piece, absolutely. I think the operating costs will be greatly offset by, by fees, operating costs and continued maintenance.
Thank you, chief.
I might have misspoke. I want to make sure I clarify. So the TIFF money that we've collected so far is just under $400,000. What we anticipate on the nine projects that have been approved so far is 4.2 million is what we'll collect over the life of those, those TIFFs that will go for this. Not sure what I said, but if I'd said it incorrectly, that's what it is. It's, it's just under 400, what we've collected to date, and then 4.2 over the life. That's over the next 20 years.
And, sorry, and so TIFFs are 20 years, and this bond is 20, correct? The, the Public Safety Building bond?
The TIFFs, the way that the TIFFs are written, it may be a lot less than that. It's as, because we don't know the projects, what it's going to be assessed at, all those things. So you could collect that at a much faster rate, but for some of them are between 20 and 30 years. Yeah.
Yeah, and I would just remind the counselors that at the last session of legislature, they extended the ability to, in effect, re-up TIFFs for an extended period of time beyond the cap, I think, used to be 20 years. Is that correct? And so now, I think you have the ability to extend those TIFFs further.
Counsel Walker, did you have something?
Yes, thank you. It's nice to be able to see what you're, you're moving on, but I have a problem with it because, number one, we can't see cursor. Number two, little things that you're trying to show on there, we can't see very well. So I'd like it if you would produce paperwork that has what you have up there on that screen, so we can really look at it here. Because he's in the middle with a pencil, and the other one's in the top with another pencil. It's very hard to figure out exactly what you're saying, doing, and whatever. And ever since we've gone to this so-called computer world, we get very little paper, and it really bothers me that we don't get the designs put in front of us so we can see what... that we don't get the designs put in front of us so we can see what you're really telling us that you're trying to do up there. Because if you didn't point out where the old station was, we're looking at that, we have a hard time to find out. If it's half of it, three-quarters of it, all of it. The parking, to me, it looks like you've got enough parking there for the high school. So I'd like to be able to see that in front of me instead of trying to look up there and trying to figure out where you are, what you're doing, how you're gonna bring your fire trucks in when there's an emergency or out. We can't see that. So it'd be nice if we could have something printed when you're trying to show us designs.
So, Mr. Manager, can you, um, have that slide printed out, provided to the council?
Yeah, we'll have some large, uh, sets of those and we'll put it in the council office for you to have.
Other questions or comments from the council?
Uh, so a few follow-up questions, I think, Counsel Cowan on the ad hoc committee recommendations. Covered number two. The, the third one, um, was related to the elimination of what I think the chief referred to as the dirty classroom or training facility and, I guess perhaps Mr. Titus might wanna speak to this. I'm not, it's not clear to me. I, I understand the recommendation that's in the sheet here and the, and the cost savings related to it, but it, it seems like elimination of that building defeats the whole purpose of the segmentation that we're doing at Engine Two and that we're doing here to separate equipment and contaminated gear from the clean side of the building. So I, I'm not sure what the alternative for that would be if this is not, if something of this type isn't included.
As Mr. Titus might come up, I'll just, um, I'll just break out the cost for you. So if you look at that, um, number three section, you'll see the cost, the burn building itself, that's at center structure, that's at six-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand eight-fifty. I mentioned that we did receive the five-hundred thousand for that building. And so that leaves us with a cost of a hundred-and-seventy-six thousand eight-fifty for that center building. And then the four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollar savings is for that dirty building that the mayor just referenced.
Yeah, I think the, the intent of the committee was to keep the burn training building. But the dirty building was, could be, was a, a want, not a need. And could be something considered to not have at this time. Unless we could get maybe more funding to help if it's gonna be a regional center, get more help, maybe another grant to build that facility. But along with our recommendations with the, uh, with the gun range as well, it was just ways to conserve, to save a little bit of money in this case. Um, I think I figured that it's, this whole build-out is gonna cost about a point on our bill rate when it's all done, wherever it is. So next year, three years from now, if you wanna know what this is costing us, you just add one, take one point in your evaluation, you know what you're paying extra for this building. On top of all the increases and everything else that kinda happened along the way and other projects, and I understand the schools interested in expansions and so it all adds up. So we're looking at ways to maybe we can conserve a little bit. And one of them was in there that we would be, we have ideas or we can save some more money if the council is so inclined to wanna hear them. But those were two, three obvious choices that we had right away.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, I guess the, the other recommendation is, um, for the main part of the building to reduce the square footage. And I guess the question I have there I don't think you could just uniformly say make it six-point-three percent smaller and every room's smaller. Has there been any discussion about, I think the design folks refer to it as programming, but the, the, the stuff that's in the building, has there been any discussion about the reduction is related to the elimination of some type of programming or function within the building?
So I, I guess we can, JP, if you wanna jump in as well. So the original committee came up with a programming. A, the second committee under another architect also came up with programming. I believe they were within five-hundred square feet of each other. So the programming number, we're very confident this is, this is what the building needs. So then with that programming number, we approached both the architect and the city and our engineers, approached our construction manager, Ally Cook, and said, you know, this is kinda where we're at, what, this is, we think where our square footage is what makes sense. The building is laid out on a thirty-foot grid, which is the most economical construction for this type of building, meaning that the bar joists are thirty feet. It's a standard length, standard size. If you reduce, say, the building by, oh, we wanna take five percent off, well now we need special order joists to make it twenty-eight feet. And it kinda changes the whole layout of the building. JP, you wanna touch on that a little bit? You gotta hold the button.
Yeah, yeah. It, we, what we also lose is design efficiency and cost efficiency based on scale. So just, just simply saying, oh, five percent isn't gonna actually equate to a five percent in savings. It's actually gonna be pennies on the dollar. You would have to wholesale take out way too much programming impacting the overall current design operation in order to see any type of efficiency with that. You know, we still need to put foundation walls in and just because I take five percent out, you know, I don't see that dollar for dollar. And what we're actually gaining here based on any type of size that's related to this is the actual efficiencies of, of scale. The more steel we can buy, the cheaper it is to buy. The more concrete we buy, the cheaper it is to buy. But as we pull that back, the price doesn't necessarily come down as everyone expects. Um, which, which I think might have, might be also shown in has, as we showed reductions in the tactical training. I think those probably didn't come back as much as everyone expected to, but it's because we're only taking a limited amount of square footage away. We still need mechanical, we still need electrical for certain things. They don't just square, they're not square foot-based systems that just come out dollar for dollar.
Yep, thank you. I get, I, I guess back, I appreciate that. But back to my question from the ad hoc committee's recommendation. There's a recommendation in here that, um, there can be some reduction. Was there thoughts about what would be reduced from a programming standpoint?
Yeah, the, one of the unfortunate things, we, we've only met six times as an ad hoc committee and this building is being programmed and designed for years. Um, and we weren't even involved in the programming. So it was, we had to wait until we got to the fifty percent, I guess, before we could even talk about programming. And I were told that maybe we can't back up any buses cause it's too late. Um, but we did spend several hours combing through the plans and seeing, you know, office space and storage space. It looked like it wasn't really not needed, but it was there. And we were told, well, that's cause they have to fill a void when they're doing a plan. They just gotta fill the space with something to fit the footprint that they've decided. We got, and so we haven't really gone and asked for what it would be, look like if we were gonna reduce the size. We're told, and I, I can't argue with their expertise and logic, and I won't, that it won't save us anything, but we have not gone through that exercise yet. But we did physically go through the plans and saw a lot of things that maybe we really didn't need, but we were told it was programmed in and so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, the original ad hoc committee back in two thousand eighteen, nineteen dealt with the programming piece that Mr. Titus was a part of. Uh, so that original committee worked through all that programming, uh, to get us here today.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
I would just like to correct that, cause I was on that original committee. We didn't go over the actual square footage of office space and what is needed here and what's, we just reviewed plans that had already been done.
All right. Dan, can you go back to the, um, financial sheet?
Oh, it's in the PowerPoint.
I got it, I got it.
Yeah, so, um, I, I understand the numbers on here that, um, they're a little bit, I, I think for the public, this is gonna be a little bit confusing. So, um, if I'm looking at this, here's the way I looked at it in my notes. So there was a bond authorization of up to forty-five million dollars. And, um, there was an additional three million dollars in here in grant money. Um, and then, um, one thing that's not shown on here was there was an expectation when we bought, um, sixty-seven Kitty Hawk with general fund money, that we would save one-point-three million dollars, one-point-two or one-point-three. Those numbers are used interchangeably off the top of this. So to me, i- i- it's not that this number doesn't come in, come within that, but I think that, um, we wanna be clear at a high level that, um, in effect, we had an authorization of up to forty-five million in bonds. We had three million more, which gets us to the forty-eight. We deduct one-point-three million off of that because we told people if we spent the general fund money, the budget on this would be reduced by one-point-three million dollars. And then we bonded the five-point-eight-five million. So I, I'm comfortable with the number. I, I think when we come back to, um, look at this, I, I, uh, perhaps a simplified chart that would more clearly convey the message to the public might be useful.
Yeah, I think that the, you're absolutely right, Mayor. I think when we talked about Kitty Hawk, there was, actually it was between a million to a million and a half, I think is the number that we use of value engineering savings as a result of not having to put certain mechanical services in some areas that weren't the most efficient s- uh, space for that. And then patching this building together, uh, was also a reduction. So, so you're right. I think that we, you know, we had been, uh, when we did present this though, if you go back to the presentation that was done to the, uh, council and through the public process, total project cost was at, uh, forty-five million. We already knew we had the two-point-five million. At no time in any of the presentations did we say we would take the two-point-five and reduce the forty-five million. I think that's what the, well, the mayor's just saying, look, that's, just make sure you're showing that in here.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting necessarily that you, it reduces it.
Right.
But I think those are the big components in this, which is the bond authorization. And then we receive grant money on top of that, less the Kitty Hawk savings, less what we've bonded. In effect, it leaves you with a, a total potential authorization using those numbers of forty-million-eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in which this bottom line here, the thirty-six-four is substantially below that.
Yeah, yeah. And, and you know, the other piece is the, the one-point-one billion for nine-one-one. So we can look to reconfigure this so you'll see it differently. The other change that took place in here is nearly the million dollars on the, on the, um, the firing, uh, the, um, the burn building was not part of the original project. We brought it in. So we're showing the five-hundred thousand, but that wasn't part of the initial. And so, um, so yeah, we can rework this. So you see, maybe what you'll end up seeing is now the total project cost will be taking into account all those, the anticipated reductions, the nine-one-one relocation will be in that number. And then we can, we can work through. The challenge that, cause I talked to the team about the, uh, uh, doing this in one phase instead of two, how do we break out that cost? The challenge is that it was, you know, that was, that was the cost estimate of a very large picture of the project. And now we've, as we've narrowed down, that has moved, but we're, we're still seeing the savings, but it's, you're right, Mayor. It's hard to, it's hard to pinpoint that and be able to show, here's where that reduction is based on the total project. But we'll, we can rework that.
Yeah, the other, the other thing I would suggest is you drop the one-point-one million below the bottom line because up to this point, all the discussions have not included moving nine-one-one. I think based on the conversations the council had at the last meeting, we understand that that cost is going to be in there. Uh, but I think we wanna split that out and, um,
Sure.
Uh, the, the other, and I guess the last question I have is using these numbers here, the thirty-six-four is the total amount that's left turnkey to get in the building. Do the construct, yeah, based on the, the contingencies and so forth to get us in there and get operational.
That's correct.
Yeah, Counsel Cal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in terms of the dirty building, the, the additional training building, um, I heard what seemed to me is sorry, compelling arguments in terms of that being a valuable piece, particularly I'm thinking is, as you talked about it being a regional training facility. Perhaps that, uh, if it would, um, it would be helpful for me to have some of those talking points or your considerations, Chief, in terms of if that wasn't there, uh, cause I appreciate the ad hocks, you know, it, uh, it could be something we save, but what's that gonna do in terms of where someone, uh, a team that's just gone through a training needing to take up space in the, the other building or where would they go? And just, just be helpful to understand. If that wasn't there, you know, how you would do it. You, you pointed out earlier this evening that the location of the current burn building and the current station, they're much closer together. This is a much further, uh, space away. So those kinda pros and cons would be helpful for me to think about. Thanks.
Further questions, comments by the council? Not seeing any. Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation. And, um, for the public, um, the, the council will have to take an action, uh, on this question and it's anticipated this will be at the next regular council meeting and there'll be a, a public comment period associated with that as well. Um, with that, we'll move on. I think, uh, Mr. Goyet's still on here to provide us, uh, update, um, about the results of the street, street scan survey.
Yes, so, um, I'll be brief so you guys have a good chance to ask questions. So as you are aware, last budget season, or a budget season ago, we had a contract with Street Scan to do a full inventory of city streets and sidewalks on condition rating. And what that did was it assigned a number from zero to a hundred. Um, hundred being the perfect road, which really doesn't exist because they're never perfect. And zero being a road that you're not gonna drive down because it's almost impassable. And so all of our city streets were ranked, um, excluding streets that were under construction this summer, including dirt roads. So streets like Center Street, North Auburn Road, um, streets that we were anticipating getting done, uh, North Auburn Road, Perkins Ridge, streets that were gonna substantially change the condition within this construction season. It didn't make sense to pay the money for them to go scan it, compile the data and give us a number, knowing that that number is worthless. So you'll see when I get to the slide that shows our total street length, it's short, probably forty to fifty miles because you also don't do dirt roads. And we didn't do Washington Street because it's a city, uh, state road and it just undergone a pavement project last year. And there's a section that's unanticipated for being paved next year. So this is a picture of a road that's eighty-six to a hundred. Just been paved, just been striped, looks great. This is an eleven to twenty-five. Alligator cracked, dilaminated sections, potholes, not in very good condition. So we did a hundred-and-eighty-five miles of Auburn Roads were scanned. This is the equipment on top of the vehicle that you may have seen. It had big stickers on the side. It was a white car. It was around a lot this summer. The streets are scanned segment, segmentally, so it's basically block by block. So a street like Hampshire Street could be ten different segments. So you get ten different numbers. So each segment of road is given a number. I went the wrong way. So this is how we rated, which when Street Scan gave us their, um, presentation at the end of this project, we're actually quite impressed that we averaged a seventy-point-six. They felt that this number was, or they see that this number is much higher than they usually see when they do these types of things for municipalities, which we feel pretty good about. I mean, it's not great, but it's not terrible. We'd, we'd rather be on the good end than the bad end. You can see we had thirty-three miles of excellent, sixty-seven miles of good, uh, fifty miles of fair, twenty-five miles of poor. fair, twenty-five miles of poor, seven point three miles of very poor, and serious of about a half a mile. So, that's that, zero to eleven. I could take a guess, actually, I know which segments they said were extremely poor, and they wouldn't surprise you. So, they also characterize how these numbers, what these scoring, what types of cracks, what types of distress types were seen in these roads, whether it were potholes, alligator cracking, longitudinal, horizontal cracking, rutting, those sorts of things. You can see bumpiness is also a part of this, it all equates into that. And you see cracking is the biggest component of our asphalt distress, which is no surprise because we're in a freezing state, so you have that frost action on our road, so, very typical. They also, if you noticed this summer, you saw a guy, orange suit, driving around in a little scooter on all the sidewalks, he was doing the same thing on our sidewalks. And we did fifty-six miles of sidewalks were raided, six hundred and fifty-eight segments. We actually scored very well on our sidewalk conditions, seventy-five point six. Obviously, there are some sections that aren't good, small sections, about two miles were, I would say, in need of immediate attention, and the majority of our sidewalk is in pretty good shape, and which is not surprising because typically, we have attacked our downtown sections, and in the past decade, we've been redoing all our sidewalks in those sections in the streets that have been rehabbed. We don't typically rehab, we, well, I don't think I can name more than one or two where we've rehabbed a street and not fixed the sidewalk at the same time. Same thing, they, they tell you what type of distress that sidewalk goes in, and most of it is cracking. Surface distortion, that's the waviness and the frost thieves that you see. Tree roots are a big reason you see that type of distortion, where you have a tree in the esplanade, which is why we selectively plant trees now in the species, so that you don't have that big bump where the root goes underneath the sidewalk. So, right now, I have a half-inch-thick piece of, half-inch-thick pieces of paper that describe where all those segments are. We are breaking that down into street lengths and making it a more manageable list, so that we can use that to help determine which streets are in the most distress, which streets are the lowest PCI rating. Along with that list that they gave us, actually has ADT on it, so average daily trips. So, we know this street might be considered the worst in the city, but it sees fifty cars a day versus this street is not in serious condition, but it sees fourteen thousand cars a day. So, we have to take those things into account and say, well, do we fix this street with fifty cars, or do we restrict, fix the street with fourteen thousand cars? So, that's also factored in when we come with our list for you this next budget cycle to determine which streets we rehab, reconstruct, which ones we do, that will also be a factor in that. And along with, we meet with the water district, which streets are they replacing water main on, which streets are they replacing sewer main on, unitill, hey, where's your gas main? The oldest, what are you doing there? Because even though we do have a moratorium on our streets after we're done rebuilding them, the worst thing to see is a gas patch every twenty feet, because the year after we go in and rebuild it, they're going to replace their main. So, those are also things that we look at. So, with that, I guess I'll open it up to questions.
Yep, questions from the council. Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you talk about sidewalks, you try to kind of work with roads. When are we going to do the sidewalks out around here? I mean, those bricks are very horrible to walk on.
So, brick sidewalk is one of those things that is great in the downtown, looks great, is a nightmare to maintain because it doesn't take much to mess them up, but let's say, one utility cut, one water break, and they're all wavy, and we do have a, a project that's going to be going on right here, right next to ninety-five main, that will rip out a section of the brick sidewalk here this fall. We replaced them, they're extremely expensive to install, it's a condition of the downtown, it helps define the downtown, so we will be replacing it with brick. We try to maintain them as best we can. Public Works did a large project, I think, two years ago where they farmed out a large section of brick sidewalk to repair. So, we attack them as we can, it's just they're expensive. And the biggest problem we have downtown is the CMP vaults are in the brick sidewalk, and so there's a metal cover with a one-inch piece of brick on it, so any water intrusion that, and it pops them off, and they're a nightmare to repair.
And my other question is, when you have, you're talking about deciding which roads to fix that are not good shape, depending on how many cars, is more value to do the one that has many cars than the few cars? I understand that logic, but if we don't take care of the crappy roads, are we responsible if I break a tie rod?
So, the way main tort law works is if a resident calls in with a pothole, is a great example, and says, hey, there's a giant pothole in front of my house at twenty-seven North Auburn Road, and the city is responsible to respond to that pothole within twenty-four hours, that they go out with the patch truck, they fill the pothole. If the resident doesn't call in and merely hits the pothole and says, hey, there was a giant pothole in front of my house, and now my car is broken, well, that repair is on the homeowner because the city can't be held responsible for every pothole in the city that occurs that they don't know about. We have people that, that Public Works has a crew that goes out and repairs potholes, but they don't hit every pothole every day. If there's a major concern or a major pothole and someone's concerned about it and they report it, well, Public Works will go out and fix it, but you, otherwise municipalities would go bankrupt, saying, hey, the pothole killed my car, you owe me a car. Every, I'd call up and say, hey, you owe me a car.
Other questions or comments, Council Plaid?
Thank you. I first want to say, this is a great report, I've been waiting like a year for this, and it's fantastic. I love it. I hope to see it every time we run this, which probably won't be that frequently, I know it's pretty expensive, but that's actually one of my questions, is how frequently do we run this report? Have you, is this the first time we've run this report with this technology?
With this technology, yes. It used to be up until about five years ago, you hired a couple college kids, and they'd go out in an old squad car, and they'd drive the city with a wheel out the window, and they'd measure the street, and they'd say, ah, that looks like a B, give it a B. And then they'd drive the next day and they'd do the same thing. And then halfway through the summer, those two would quit, and two new guys would start, and they'd say, oh, that's an A. So, it was a way to get a reading, but it wasn't a very accurate reading.
So, the PCI would have been subjective previously, now it's objective.
Correct.
So, with that, I guess this is a question also for the mayor or the manager, but where's the goal creation coming from internally in your department? Are you already at the point of saying, all right, we're at a seventy point six now, and we want to be at a seventy-five percent in five years? What is that conversation looking like internally?
So, we would like to maintain or better the seventy. Realistic budget-wise, we're not going to get to an eighty, unless you guys want to spend a lot of money on roads. If we can get to seventy or better, and if we're there in five years or ten years and still maintaining that seventy or better, that would be a great place for the city.
I think that, you know, Dan's been really good through this over the years, identifying those roads that have, that get to that tipping point, right?
That was my last question, is where's the tipping point?
Yeah, because there's some you just abandon until they get to that serious mark. And so, we know we have some there, we've left them there, anticipating that there are some roads that are in that fair condition, that's some of that tipping point where Dan will say, we need to do this because we don't want to reconstruct this entire road, but we can grind this.
Those are our overlay projects. You'll see, we've really started to ramp up our overlay budget over the past five years, where a road like Poland Road, I think we did last two years ago. It was a street that wasn't in bad shape, and people may say, why are they paving it? They just rebuilt this ten years ago. Well, it's because we can spend a hundred thousand dollars this summer and save a million dollars in three summers. I think a great Beach Hill Road is a great example of a road that had a lot of delamination, but the structure of the road was good, good enough that if you shim it, overlay it, you spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but you don't have to spend a million dollars to grind it up and repaint it and do all the other things, because the structure of the road was still good.
That, so that was, yeah, that was my final question, is what's the tipping point? That makes sense. I would imagine, I guess my last comment, I would imagine that we strive to become a community where every project's an overlay.
Oh, that would be
You don't have to rebuild roads, it might take twenty years to get there, but I would think that's the gold standard.
Yep.
Other questions or comments from the council?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great report, we've been waiting for this as well, and glad to see it, and I know this is kind of a, this report's kind of a forty thousand-foot view. Do you have more of the nitty-gritty details of, you know, what roads are graded at what range, so that helps give us as councilors an idea?
Yes, I've been talking to Phil about what, what the best form to disseminate to the council is in terms of, you don't want to see the thirteen thousand segments, so how we can get that to you so you can see a list of, yep, when a constituent calls you and says, my road is terrible, you can say, yes, we agree that your road is terrible, but there are five hundred roads that are just as terrible, or, you know, could give you some information.
I think the piece, I'm sorry.
I'm assuming that what we're going to see in the CIP next time is a combination of this data with the usage statistics for the roads, broken out in the three buckets, right? Reconstruction, grind them off and pave them and overlay them, and, yeah, I agree with Council Ives, it'd be good to see the whole thing, but then we need to understand with the use of the road and what the remedial action is, where do they fit into this?
Yeah, because, for example, reconstruction projects now in the downtown, they're trending about four and a half million dollars a mile, which is an incredibly high number versus an overlay project, I could do twenty miles for four and a half million. So.
One thing that we're working through when the presentation was done, we also had our GIS company that we contract with as part of this. One, it's a great tool for the team, but then we'll probably look at, is there a component to this that we can make as an overlay on, on, in GIS? That you could actually look and see a color marking of that road to know that's a serious road, that's, even though it's within segments, I think we can do some blending of colors to make that, so you can visually see, yes, that is an area, the public will see it, but you will also be able to see it, and you'll be able to reference it as well. So, we've still got to work through that, I think that they are, Ray's working on that currently, and we'll see what that looks like, and it might be a tool that'll be beneficial, rather than as, you know, this thick binder of thirteen hundred segments.
Yeah, that would be very helpful, because we got, I got constituents that are constantly asking, what, I see, my road is in really poor shape, and I've been telling them this is coming through, and be able to see where all these roads are and get to see the fine details would be very helpful, and share that with them and say, hey, this is what the system says is your, the range for this road, and compared to other roads, so they can at least see the data as well. Thank you.
Council Walker.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to where Belinda was talking about the sidewalks. I'd like to see what the cost would be from Rogue Block to Court Street on that sidewalk, because there is nothing worse than that sidewalk where we have our Festival Plaza. There really is no sidewalk. Once you remove the trees, someone decided to put in cobblers. Cobblers now are sunk down three to four inches, there's been no maintenance there in two years. I know because I sit there every summer, I watch the people trip and fall, and yet it doesn't get taken care of. The next thing to go with that sidewalk is we need a flashing light that crosses that street. Now, I know Ben has asked for us to look for money somewheres, we need a cost, you're the man, I think, that takes care of that kind of stuff. So, we would love a cost of putting that in, or to know that you're going to put that in before somebody gets run over on busy evenings when that park is being used, for whatever it may be.
I believe when we did the Festival Plaza redesign, we had included a couple flashing beacons, and we actually have relocated the crosswalk to Festival Plaza, but I can prepare that as part of the CIP so that you can see that as a standalone project, just for the sidewalk and those crossings.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you, Council Walker, for bringing it up, and I've voiced that multiple times about, yeah, across from Rogers Hair Cutting, and then Festival Plaza, and I've heard constituents that are in the Rogue Block that would like to see, I know we put some signs up when I reached out to the city, which was great, but they would like to see that blinking, a blinking light there, so there's definitely a lot of traffic down that area, and a lot of pedestrians crossing, so I couldn't concur more that having, having that in the CIP. Thank you.
Council Call.
To add to that, you've talked about the very expensive nature of upkeep for brick walkways, and yes, while I agree they look nice, and they're great on a sunny day in the summer, they're also very dangerous, even if they are well-maintained with ice. I would love to see your thoughts on other options that might help define the downtown that isn't brick, and what those costs would be, so maybe if you had the time to build that in as well.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Not seeing any, thank you very much for the presentation. The council will be in recess until seven PM. in recess until 7:00 PM. The October 20th, 2025 Auburn City Council meeting will be called to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If the councillors could introduce themselves, we'll start with Counsel Gary.
Good evening. Belinda Gary, City Councilor at Large.
Good evening. Rick Whiting, Ward One, City Councilor.
Good evening. Tim Cowan, Ward Two, City Councilor.
Good evening. Steve Milks, City Council, Ward Three.
Good evening. Jeff Harmon, Mayor.
Good evening. Ben Weisner, City Council, Ward Four.
Good evening. Leroy Walker, City Council, Ward Five.
Good evening. Adam Platt, City Councilor at Large.
Good evening. Phil Crowell, City Manager.
Thank you. The first item of business this evening is a consent agenda. There's three items on the consent agenda, appointing Jennifer Kimball to the Auburn Housing Authority and appointing Julia Bergeron Smith and Phil Saviano to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counsel Gary. Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item of business is approval of the minutes from the October 6th, 2025 regular city council meeting. Are there any errors or corrections? Not seeing any. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counsel Cowan. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative, none in the negative and one abstained. Um, for the public, uh, Counsel Weisner is abstaining as he wasn't here, uh, last meeting. Um, there's no communications, presentations or recognitions this evening, so we'll move on to the first open session of the evening. If there's members of the public that would like to address the council on any item related to city business that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Good evening. Ron DeShane, Witham Road, Auburn. I'm having a problem to get a storm drain culvert clean. It happens to be situated on the CSX railroad track and the culverts under my driveway go across the neighbor's driveway, all across Broad Street, 23. Broad Street got washed out, 24 spring. Water went over Broad Street again, patched up the culvert. I don't know if you guys got FEMA money to fix that, whatever, but the lot adjacent to that belongs to Skelton and the water has to go from her lot or Mr. William lot across underneath the railroad tracks. I'd been to the town garage. I was with Leroy Walker. We went down there with a guy from the town garage. That was the second occurrence. He looked at it, said you're gonna call CSX, notify them that there's a problem. Well, they drive down there with their vehicle and they look out the window, got water going in the culvert, got water coming out of the culvert. That's what they see, but if you get out and look at it, it's completely plugged. Now, you're asking them to go do something that it doesn't affect them because it doesn't go over their railroad track. It's 15 feet below the tracks. It's 20 feet from the track to the water. It's inconvenient to get to. So I'm asking you guys to throw them some money and get that cleaned. 2002, I've been down in Witham Road since 99. 2002 driveway washed out. I migrated upstream just to see where this all, how it worked out. Culvert was plugged. At that time, when I made a notification, they went down there and cleaned it out. But here it is. Now we're in 25. All those years, that stuff is, the field, the field floods, it washes to the culvert and now it's completely plugged. I have pictures on everything that I just said if I need to show somebody, but I've been down there, sat on the side of Broad Street before where traffic couldn't even go by. And if you just go to that area alone, you'll see that's 10, 15 feet off the road. So that's how much water. These were odd storms. Don't know when it's gonna happen again, but as it rained today, I took a ride just to see how things are going. But I've been, I was there three weeks ago. Picture on my phone right now. It's totally plugged. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Dutte, the Assistant City Manager, if you, he'll come around to the back and he'll get some information from you so that he can follow up on this.
Thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the council? If so, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any. The first open session is closed. We'll move on to unfinished business. The first item is ordinance 0710062025, amending Chapter 24 Human Relations and Services, Article 2, Section 24 dash 23 of the city's General Assistance Program regarding annual adjustments of maximum benefits. This will be for public hearing and the second reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Gary, seconded by Counsel Walker. We'll open the public hearing. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any. The public hearing is closed. Discussion by the council. Is council ready for the question? The vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cowan?
Yes.
Counsel Milks?
Yes.
Counsel Weisner?
Yes.
Counsel Walker?
Yes.
Counsel Platt?
Yes.
Counsel Gary?
Yes.
Counsel Whiting?
Yes.
Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to new business. The first item is order 9810202025 regarding location of the Lewiston Auburn 911 Center. Uh, for, uh, for the public and council, this is the item that we discussed in workshop at the last meeting. And, um, what the city administration is looking for here is a direction by the council to authorize, uh, moving the, uh, 911 center to the third floor of Auburn Hall. Um, there'll be further, um, discussions following on from the workshop today regarding how that work is paid for. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Cowan.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Weisner. If any member of the public would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any. Public comment is closed. Discussion by the council. Counsel ready for, Mr. Manager?
I, I would just add to the council, um, this was brought before the, uh, city council in Lewiston and they did approve, uh, this relocation, uh, to Auburn Hall. Thanks.
Counsel Walker.
Yes, I, I think this is gonna be a great thing for 911. Uh, they've been down in that little cubby hole for so many years that this would be a great move to get them out of there.
Thank you. Any other comments by the council? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is order 9910202025, adopting the updated fund balance policy. Uh, this is a item that was workshop when Ms. Earl provided a, uh, explanation of the policy previously to the council. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Counsel Walker. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Platt. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council regarding this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any. Public comment is closed. Discussion by the council.
One quick note from me is that, uh, it's noted on the information sheet that the final copy of the fund balance policy, uh, has all changes incorporated. That's everything that was redlined last time I presented this to you as well as the comment on, um, increase of revenue rather than specifying something with tax increase. So that was changed on here. So it says increase of revenue per your discussion.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Discussion by the council. Counsel Cowan.
Just a quick comment. Thank you, Ms. Earl, for going through this. I think these are very good, uh, improvements.
Other questions? Counsel Platt.
Thank you. Uh, a quick question. Is there any, uh, need to think that the school committee would need to fall in line with a similar fund balance definition or are these completely independent of one another? I know that with, uh, spending limits, we, we sought parity between the two organizations. Curious if that applies to fund balance.
Sure. So the reason this was updated was because our specific policy interchanged two definitions of fund balance. Undesignated, um, was one of the terms used, but, uh, the school, I don't know if their policy says undesigned or unassigned. Um, either one of those is an acceptable best practice, so they would not be required to match ours. If their policy doesn't have any interchangeable verbiage, then they should be fine.
Further questions or comments by the council? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to reports. So a few items this evening. Um, a number of members of staff and myself, uh, attended the Maine Municipal Association Annual Meeting in Bangor last week. Very productive, um, great, great turnout. Um, the educational classes were really good and it was a great opportunity to talk about, uh, common issues that we have, um, with other cities. Um, the, um, the manager and Counsel Walker and I, uh, met with the Maine Waste and Energy Executive Committee. Uh, I think it was, uh, a productive conversation and the executive committee will be meeting again on the 28th, uh, to propose some near-term actions to help with their current financial situation. Um, this is manufacturing month tour. Um, and Counselor Milks and I, uh, went to the Thomas Mosher, um, uh, manufacturing plant. I had not been in there before. It was a really great tour, very, very interesting technology and, um, they certainly produce a very, very high quality product there. It was a, it was a great, uh, great tour. I attended the Residential Housing Alliance. Um, probably no one will recognize the name. They used to be the Southern Maine Landlord Association. They've now branched out and they're doing work in Brunswick and they've taken on, um, the, uh, role of the advocacy organization for landlords in the Lewiston Auburn area. Uh, it, it was a really good meeting. I think it'll be quite productive for our landlords. They offer lots of great information to help them and will give, uh, the council and various city committees, uh, clear point of contact, uh, with landlords so we can get, uh, input from them on various policy issues. A number of us went to the Boys and Girls Club Fall Event. Uh, it was a, it was a really great event, great speakers. Um, you know, always, we all recognize, again, when we go there, what a great, uh, partnership that is between the city and the Boys and Girls Club of Southern Maine and what really positive and beneficial services they provide to, to the youth, uh, especially in the new Auburn area. And the last thing I wanted to mention is the Farm and Forest Tours were Saturday. Uh, I was able to stop by several of the farms. Uh, it's always an interesting and educational experience. So thanks very much for the, uh, Ag Committee of the SNRB for scheduling that and for the various farms for opening up their facilities to the public. Uh, with that, Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This sort of isn't a report, but it is per se. As many viewers know that because of the federal stall with the budget, Mainers are not gonna be able to, well, to date, they're not gonna be getting their food stamp allotment for this coming month. Unclear how long it's gonna take Congress to figure out what they need to, to pass a budget. It could branch into December for all we know. What I would like to propose or ask the city and the council for their, their support of possibly putting maybe some food boxes around in the city, like leave one here at Auburn Hall, one at up Norway Savings, maybe one at the Senior Center and any other place that may, would like to have one so that anybody that would like to donate food items and non par, well, non perishable food items as well as maybe things like maybe toilet paper and paper towels and things. Because it'll be a sad Thanksgiving, a time that we're supposed to give thanks for what we have if a lot of people don't have anything to be thankful for other than their family and their health.
So there's some discussions with the manager about that. I, I would say that, uh, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty regarding the current shutdown, but, um, it's very likely that if this continues on and starts impacting some of these safety net programs that we would see a spike in general assistance, um, expenditures here in the near term. So, um, the manager will report back to us if he sees, um, any anomalies in that, in that line. Counsel White.
Maine Mill has a, a new exhibit that's opening tomorrow night at 5:00, uh, commemorating the second anniversary of the tragedy in Lewiston. Uh, it's kinda, I got a preview. It's, it's, uh, very good.
Thank you. Counsel Cowan.
Uh, last week, Thursday night, attended a preview from MBR, um, and hosted a preview of Ken Burns and American Revolution series. Uh, it was a really great event and it was at the Yale High School's auditorium. So it was a wonderful, uh, use of that space. Um, and there were, uh, several students who did some, did projects and they were really, really great. So I, I think they ought to encourage people to look for that video of they, kind of a day in the life of someone in the American Revolution era. Um, and, uh, the Boys and Girls Club event was, it was really great. Uh, it was, and, just so glad, appreciative of all they do for, for the youth. Uh, then finally, uh, tomorrow morning, 9:30 to 11:00, we have, uh, Homelessness Committee meeting.
And what's the location?
Oh, yes. Uh, it is at the 121 Mill Street at the, the New Resource Center.
Great. Thank you. Counsel Mill?
Uh, enjoyed the meetings that we went to. Um, and we have a sewer, sewer meeting is tomorrow, the annual, uh, the monthly sewer meeting. We need sewer representatives. We need people that are interested. It's a great way to get involved. Um, I believe we need two and possibly three. Um, it's a great way to get involved. It's actually much more interesting than it sounds and you learn a lot about the infrastructure of the city. So that would be great.
Thank you. Counsel Weisner?
Nothing to report.
Counsel Walker?
Thank you. I'd like to, uh, you know, get out the word that, uh, this Sunday coming, we're gonna have Halloween in New Auburn at the Anniversary Park. That will start at 1:00 and finish
That will start at 1:00 and finish at 3:00. We will be giving out all kinds of candies. We have a lot of sponsors, people involved, so you'll want to come out, get dressed, enter by the Clark Tower, that is the best way. And people that are going to be worried about Thanksgiving, the age-friendly group will be putting on a Thanksgiving dinner again this year at the Petengill Senior Center, and that will start at 12:00 on Thanksgiving Day. The doors will open at 10:00, but you must register, so please call the recreation department and register that way by leaving your phone number and your name and how many's coming. And it has to be done by the week before Thanksgiving. So please, if you've got no place to go, you're welcome. It doesn't matter what age you are. Thanksgiving on Thanksgiving Day, age-friendly will be sponsoring it.
Thank you. Council Platt?
Thank you. I would just like to give the council an update on the school department's use of fund balance. You guys recall from the last, can't remember if it was workshop or meeting, but we learned that there is a deficiency on the school's side, and that they had been holding an excess of fund balance over 9%. So in our most recent finance meeting, that was obviously a top priority to discuss that and discuss ways to bring that fund balance down. So there were two primary discussions that occurred. One was a very immediate need. $181,000 were transferred out of the fund balance to imminent facilities projects. These are facilities projects that were already listed on the school's facilities plan. These were projects that were going to come up in a future bond request. So the use of that fund balance decreased future CIP or bond request. The second piece of the conversation revolved around what to do moving forward. And one of the proposals from Amanda Kutcher was to think about the creation of a capital reserve fund for the school department. To do that requires several steps. It requires a vote from the school committee. I believe it even has to go to referendum. So these things can't just be created by talking about them. But the initial conversations were had to understand what can the school department do if it finds itself with excess fund balance. So if anyone feels the need to weigh in on that or like more information, I can do more digging. Again, only conversations at this point with the school department. I believe there would be a series of votes that would need to take place at different levels and different purposes. That's it. On fund balance, there's a home football game at 7:00 PM on Friday against Bangor.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, just a couple of things to Council Gary's point regarding federal funding. As the mayor mentioned, he and I have been discussing this. We are speaking with our affiliate groups, monitoring this. I think a good analogy that was shared with me recently was, yes, the spigot's been turned off at the federal level, but picture, you know, when you have a garden hose and there's 100 feet of garden hose, even after the valve has been turned, there's still water left in that hose. That's what's being used currently. That's, some of that funding is still available, that we're able to draw down and be able to still apply that funding. Where we see challenges, as Council Gary mentioned, there'll be a ripple effect at the state level, and the state will look to say, how do we make that up? Well, there's several areas that they'll look to do that. Areas that they've targeted before is state revenue share, so it's going to be important for us to make sure that we're monitoring that, we're paying attention, we're having conversations. The mayor is very much involved in discussing this at Augusta with our representatives. We'll continue to do that. But these are areas that we are monitoring and watching. We had several different events that took place. Has been mentioned here, a couple others is the household hazardous waste collection that was part of. We partner with AvCog in the region on that, so that occurred on the 18th. And then we also have the, it's also Fire Prevention Month, and so we had the open house for the fire department, and the, we kicked off the sand buckets for seniors, and so that is underway. We encourage people to register with PW if they'd like to have the sand buckets delivered and available. And then we are also accepting parade entries for the Auburn Christmas Parade. We'd love to see a great turnout for that. So organizations, businesses, decorate afloat, be part of the parade. We're anticipating that we will have a great turnout for our parade event this year. Thanks.
Council Walker?
Thank you. I want to put a shout-out to Council Platt's great job with the school department. If we want to go back before the budget was approved, I asked for them to cut that budget by quite a bit, and they found the point where they wanted to cut to. But you can see there was still 200,000 we could have cut at that time, so a great job, though, for finding that.
Thank you. Ms. Earl, the quarterly finance report.
Okay, good evening. You'll notice that this is a new format, which we have talked about. I was kind of easing you into it, warning you about it coming. But the idea here is that it is more than just me saying everything looks good and here's a bunch of numbers. So at least in this, with this new format, the very front page will have an overview of the general fund, and this will happen every quarter. That will compare revenue and expenditure percentages, just with a quick review, and it will give us short little blurb on whether or not there are any areas of concern or significant variance, which in this case there is not. One of the benefits of doing this quarterly report is that it's better for analyzing trends rather than looking at the quick month-to-month where some cyclical activity can actually make things look worse than they really are, and we have to explain, well, that was just a day after, or something like that. So this is a really nice way of being able to see where we're trending for the first three months of the fiscal year. So the top seven revenues is the second page of the report, as well as expenditures, but it goes into a little bit of discussion about those top seven revenues and where we're at with those, where we were compared to last year. That's on the left-hand side, as well as in the graph there. We are exactly where we're supposed to be, as I noted in the beginning. There's no areas of concern. But the idea of this is to be able to give a little bit more explanation about those areas, the percentages that we're at for the quarterly report, as well as giving some, sorry, some idea of where we're at for whether or not we're over, under, and why. So if there's some reason that something wasn't received in a certain amount of time, that explanation will be in here. So I won't, you won't be looking at a number and not having any explanation about why there's a difference, and why, if there is a difference, I've said there's no area of The next page of the report covers NSBA and Ingersoll. So this, these first few pages are just overviews. It's kind of a quick snapshot so that you don't have to look through all those pages after. I hope you do, but that you don't have to in order to get an idea of what's happening. It's just of four pages of saying, okay, here's what's happening with all of these funds. And if you want to look further into that, that's what all those other pages are after that. But it's so you don't have to look through that and try and figure it out for yourselves. So with NSBA and Ingersoll, again, just quick blurbs, as well as some finance fund-type definitions, because we talk about those a lot, and it's normal in the finance world, but not necessarily for everyone else. So it's good to get everybody up to date with those and see those more often, so we're not speaking Greek to you when we're talking about these things. And then the very last page of those updates is just what's happening in the Financial Services Department. I think it's important for everyone to know what these divisions are doing throughout the quarter, so you can get an idea of what affects those numbers that you're seeing. So each department or division gave an update, which was accounting, assessing, and the clerk's office. Some really interesting information in there. And then, as I said, it's continuing on with the reports from our financial system, Munis or Enterprise ERP, that you're used to seeing. So those are all still available to you, and there's a few changes that I'm hoping to make to that to make it a little bit easier to read, but this is what Munis puts out for you. So all of that explanation won't happen next time unless you really want me to say it again, but that's just so that you know what's happening with this new quarterly report. Again, there's no areas of current concern, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions about the financial report? Council Cowan?
No questions, just a comment. I love this introductory section. It's a huge asset to the reports, and thank you for putting the work into it. It's really, it's really great.
Other questions? Council Whiting?
On revenues, the building permits and marijuana business licenses, is that like a cyclical thing? So that typically, like permits are heavier in the spring, and maybe the marijuana things are heavier in the first of the year?
Yes. So you'll notice on the left-hand side of that page, it talks a little bit about the building permits and marijuana business licenses. It goes a little further into that, giving you the prior year. So it's saying we're around the same level, so we are on track, but yes, those are seasonal.
Other question? Mr. Manager?
I just want to note the, one, great job, Kelsey. I think this is, as Council Cowan said, this is a great tool for the council to be able to use. Under Norway Savings Bank Arena, you'll see an increase in the operating gain year-to-date of about 168,000. We, youth hockey is an ever-moving target when it comes to leagues and where do they, where's their home ice? So we do have the Nordiques now using Norway Savings Bank as their home ice for their program. They were located, they were using the Coliseum in Lewiston. One thing that we did when we agreed to contracting with the Nordiques is that there was a requirement to pay their full year upfront. And so that's why you see, why you see that increase. We did not break it out over a monthly billing. It was just, it's important for us to make sure we have that funding, and so that we can secure that ice. Because if we're securing that ice, filling that ice is becoming, it would be very challenging as decisions are made based on other programming. So that's the explanation for that.
Council Walker?
Yeah, when we had the audit people here, they had suggested that somewheres we were behind, or somebody was behind on payments for the arena. It is, that indicated here somehow that, I can't pick it out.
So it's from the prior year, but it is kept in an account for, and I've just forgotten the term, which I did the same thing when they were here, too. Sorry. But it's accounts that we don't expect or that are unlikely to pay, so it is accounted for. It's showing that this is still owed, so it's in their reports. So yes, it is accounted for.
It was a sponsorship amount, wasn't it?
No, no. We have, it's, it's part of the reason why we asked for the cash upfront, because we do have a contract that we had with a user that did not pay their full contract. It's still on our books. We'll talk, you know, we'll continue to work with finance on that. That is going through the legal process at this point before we determine to what takes place with that debt that's owed.
We will get further reports on it.
You will, yeah.
And just, just to follow up on that, I'm assuming that's being recorded as uncollectible?
Thank you, uncollectible. That word was escaping.
I know, I could see the ears turning. But their regular DSO, you know, whatever they, I don't know what their invoices are, net 30 or net 60 or something. For the usual billings that they're doing, they're not behind on collecting those, correct? It's only these anomalies.
They, Norway? Is that what you're saying when you say they, Norway Arena, is not behind?
Yeah, so it's one thing that they're recorded as uncollectible, like the situation that we were just talking about, but as they're, the people that don't pay upfront are in an uncollectible status, they're getting some type of an invoice, are they, for that facility and that account, do they tend to pay in a timely manner?
Yes, so they, the list of any over 90 days is very, very small. It's unfortunately just one of the larger ones is over the 180-plus days.
Council Gary, what's it?
Thank you. If they're so far behind, are they allowed to use our facility, or do they have to pay what they owe, and then they can use the facility for pay?
Yeah, it depends on, it depends on what we've contracted with them. You know, I think that we were on a payment plan, is what we had negotiated, was a payment plan. The payment plan ended about the same time as they stopped using the facility, is when payments ended. And so, but yes, if we had someone else, most of our other providers are, as Kelsey said, they're paying as using. We don't have that challenge. But we did take a very different approach with this contract for this hockey program as a result of that.
Thank you.
Other questions on the finance report? Is there a motion to accept the finance report?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Council Walker, is there a second? Seconded by Council Platt. All those in favor? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the report is accepted. We'll move on to the second open session of the evening. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council regarding city business, items are not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session is closed. There's no executive session tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Moved by Council Wisner, seconded by Council Platt. All those in favor? Council will be adjourned.